I thought that you weren't.
Right, we are recording. It is ten oh two AM. And we will hold the Grant County Board of Commissioners to order. Monday, September nineteenth. Would invite you to stand with us as your right is to lead the prayers.
Before we have prayer, I do want to recognize someone that just passed away yesterday. Lester Cates passed away yesterday and just want to remember the Cates family in our prayers today. I know a lot of farmers here know him really well, and he's been a patriarch in our county for quite some time. So let's pray. Father, we just thank you today for the business at hand that we're about to do. Lord, we do pray for the Cates family as they're going through a time of loss. Lord, just be with them as only you can. Give them a holy hug from heaven. Lord, let us have wisdom and knowledge today. And Father, we just thank you for what you've done in our lives. We just pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and.
Thank you. We see you. Under current claims minutes payroll, we will do our pre approvals on the claims first. Invoice edit reports from September the twelfth. These were pre approved in the general batch sixty four thousand five hundred four dollars sixty six cents. Other batch forty seven thousand four hundred one dollar seventy cents. And the highway batch twenty one dollars and fifty seven cents for a grand total of one hundred eleven thousand nine hundred twenty seven dollars ninety three cents. This was a pre approval, so we would need a motion to ratify.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve the pre approval. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
And it's carried. We also have today's invoice edit reports dated nine nineteen twenty two. General batch would be one hundred forty three thousand four hundred fifty six dollars five cents. Other batch sixty seven thousand four hundred twenty dollars twenty six cents. Highway batch went from twenty one up to five hundred and forty five thousand. Can you believe that? Five hundred forty five thousand seven hundred eighty five dollars sixty six cents for a grand total of seven hundred fifty six thousand six hundred sixty one dollars and seventy, excuse me, ninety seven cents. And this is a invoice edit for today, so we would need a motion to approve the bills.
So moved.
Second. Motion to Mr. Burton, second Mr. Wright. Any discussion on those items? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried unanimously. We also have our payroll number nineteen. A pre approval was given on September thirteenth for the gross amount of five hundred eighteen thousand five hundred forty eight dollars thirty cents. And it was paid out September sixteenth. So we would need a motion to ratify the pre approval for payroll nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, Mr. Burton, second Mr. Wright. Any questions on that? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. What I'm seeing, we've taken care of our bills. All right. The other item here is our Monday, March seventh, regular session of the county commissioners. It has been reviewed, edited, and comes to you for a recommendation to approve these minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and I will second that. I believe you're probably wanting to abstain since you weren't part of that. Any other questions on the content, Mike?
No.
All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those abstaining, stay. Carry two to one abstention. You've taken care of our minutes. Right. Communications and more updates, and we'll start with our auditor and work around the room.
Just quickly, I guess, the state board of council are getting close to finishing our audit for two thousand twenty one. Haven't had an exit conference scheduled yet, but I assume that'll happen before too long. Just an update there, we did have the tax sale last Wednesday. So just those two items.
Ready? Update, other elected officials in the room, we're gonna see you in a little while up here. Right, special committees. Boards. EMA director.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Just a brief update, COVID numbers seem to be improving. Looks good for now. Hate to juice this, but we're doing well. It's actually been on a decline now over the month, so we're doing well there. The schools are reporting that everything is really started off well for them. So encouraged by that. We did review the plans with them, should that take a change in numbers, but they're well prepared. The only other thing I have, a couple of things for this morning. Radio testing did begin last week with the new, the new system. That went very well, particularly with the VHF radios. That was better than expected, actually. So yes, that is good news. Then they'll continue that today or this week. I think this week at some point, we should have some of our local folks out there with radios testing that system and make sure everything is functioning.
And again, for public consumption, when we talk VHF, we're talking about the volunteer fire departments. Those, that's a communication area that we were very much thirty plus years behind. And so this is helping us to move forward with our firefighters.
And it really is important, and I think the county made a smart move when we decided to keep that system in place. A lot of other counties now are having to go back and install that. That would be our backup system in the event that we have a failure or really the eight hundred megahertz is somewhat vulnerable to cyber attack. VHF is not, so we try to keep that in our back pocket for communications. The other thing is storm damage from July twenty third storm. We did have to reactivate that, that two one one system. The state accidentally shut that off on us for a few days, so I caught it. But they did reactivate that till the twenty first, so we're continuing to collect data from there. The state intended to send some folks in to help us, but there was other parts in the state that had flooding down south Davies County. So they pulled the resources to there, which is fine. We're doing okay. But we'll continue to collect that data and see what we can do with that. Questions?
Do you know if we're getting anywhere close to the threshold to receiving, bringing some funds back because of the damage?
State's gonna help me look at that data, and there's several different categories where we could fall. The small administration, small business administration is the one we're really hoping to hit. Threshold is lower. We really hope more people would get on, and there's still time, so we might see that. But it's, at this point, we're not there. But we'll crunch the numbers and look at that for sure.
And we're trying to get that information out publicly. I know I've seen some things. Do we need to hit it again?
That wouldn't hurt. We're gonna try to do that with PSA maybe this week and just remind folks that that is still, still available, particularly our business folks. We know that, and I didn't see a lot of businesses reporting in there as of yet, so hopefully they're still crunching their numbers. But honestly, even if they had insurance, we want to know the total amount of damage. The state wants to know because it's based on that. It's not based on how much your insurance covered or anything else.
So just, just one question on the business side. Is that, does that include any kind of loss of revenue?
Yes. Any loss that they had from that, correct.
So if it was a restaurant along the bypass that was out, they should go ahead and put that in?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We, yeah, we, have you worked with the chamber at all on that?
We did. Kyle has put that out.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? I think we're good. Right. Is Mark is in the room?
Yep.
He's hiding.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
What do we have from IT?
Well, I just have the AT&amp;T IAR solution. I know we talked about that a couple of weeks ago. They finally got back with this on some pricing. So Justin, did you have a copy of that? So I got a few copies here that are. But basically, this is just to add another circuit for our calls. That way, in the event, you know, if our main internet circuit were to go down, we could flip that over. And it also gives us granular controls where we could have the calls go to cell phones, if they be. At least I know this really stirred up a big situation, and we are in talks with Metronet. They're a different ISP provider. And so we're, they're not down here downtown yet, but they have done cost analysis and stuff, and it sounds like they can't be down here. So we're also looking into that as well. But basically, for this additional services right here, because we currently pay one thousand five hundred seventy four dollars, I believe, a month. And this would basically add on four hundred sixty seven dollars thirty two cents a month. But we, they did give us some credit for us being down those, you know, couple days. So.
I'm smiling because I don't think that was real credit. I could, we're trying to, you know, use. I still don't know that we should accept it.
No, I, that's, I mean, that's, man, I'm, like I said, I mean, we're, you know, working with Metronet. But obviously, that fiber and stuff that works not here yet, that'd probably be something for next year. If that was something we were wanting to pursue. So, I mean, this would just be up to you, gentlemen, if you wouldn't feel like it would be worth it to integrate. Or if we just need to, you know, look into Metronet more viable option, I guess.
Is there any contract with this second, secondary circuit?
This, this was all he sent me.
So everyone got locked into a certain, like twelve months or?
I don't believe so, no. But this was the only thing he sent me. Now, if I say yes, this was approved, I mean, he very well could send me something. And if he does, I can just send that on to Justin, and he can have the attorney look at it. But I, yeah, he didn't give me a contract or anything with it. This doesn't have like a, any terms on it from what I'm, from what I'm seeing.
The only reason I ask that question, if we do make a flip mid-year, I don't want to be tied into a contract that we're gonna pay this money out.
Right.
And so we're just trying to be watchful.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, he, they, he didn't give me any additional contract with this.
And so recently, AT&amp;T's been the only game in town, so we are.
Locked in.
Locked in there, but I, I think it behooves us to review and see what our contract, how clause is. If we're a thirty day, or this may be one of those that we bite our lip and, and continue to have a rollover annual renewable. I just don't recall. I think that's important for us to know.
I know, I know Jeff, he was, he's our account rep. He was saying our, our agreement hasn't been touched or modified in several years. So I know that's something he is looking to do soon. So I don't know if, maybe I could get that expedited, and then that way that'll lay the terms out for us, like what we're currently in and what they're wanting to change us over to.
I'm lying right now, no action on this until we get some.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I mean, for me, I'd like to know about the contract type thing, to make sure that we're not. And then if, if we're not, and it's a day to day or thirty day out or whatever, I think that would be a fine thing to go ahead and go into. I, I think the redundancy in, in the, in the process is a good thing for us.
Right.
To make sure that we've got a backup plan, we can go ahead and, and have, because everything, we depend upon everything on the internet.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we really do, so very important to us.
Yeah, and I mean, the thing is, even with Metronet, whether we decide to go with them as our primary ISP. I mean, I think we should still keep AT&amp;T, like have Metronet as either, you know, whichever one we have as our primary. I think it's important to have two different providers because there have been times where we've had fiber get cut, and it took everybody out. And it didn't even matter, you know, if it was fiber fed from another direction. So I think when you have a different provider that, you know, takes care of issues like that. So I can, I can give back with Jeff, have him get our contract, and see if there's any terms tied to this. I can bring that back to the next meeting.
I think our next meeting, I want to say October first, is that right? Second.
Looks like October third.
Okay. I was in the ballpark.
All right. So we'll just do that then.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again, gentlemen, I appreciate that.
Right. Highway Department.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
A couple of things to update you. We'd like to apply for a recycle center grant program through the state. We're trying to replace our building. It's getting to be twenty two years old, and it's made out of a what's say, like rubber-like material, and it's getting pretty bad shape. And we'd like to apply for that grant. They give up to a hundred thousand dollars. So we're trying to apply for that. We know it's like a hundred forty two thousand to replace it, but we'd like to see if they can help us out. So I'd like to see if you, gentlemen, would be approved to give us a financial commitment, a letter. And then I'm also gonna go to the council meeting Wednesday night and try to see if they'll work with us on getting that too, so.
Is, is this a total replacement with the concrete footers and, or is this just the skin?
Just the skin, yeah. Everything else, we've had it inspected a few years ago. Everything else is still all right. The main metal structure is still all right and everything. It's just the cloth material that covers it, and that's why we're trying to do is replace that of it.
Was something done last year?
We had the inspection done like last year, yes. And I think we had to pay like five thousand dollars to have that done. And they'll take that off to, if we use this company to go towards that material.
Just off the top of your head, David, do you recall how long this has been in service? It's, it's been at least twenty years, hasn't it?
Yeah, it's, I think it was two thousand when the structure was put up, so. And I think they said if we got fifteen years out of it, we'd be lucky, so I think we went past our limits, so.
But that, that skin, that exterior is, has given us its service.
Yeah, they were starting to get some ribs and cuts in it. So we tried to patch it up as much as we can, but it'd be nice if we could get this grant and help pay for that.
So just, so, so do you have funds to do that in your account? Or do you have to go for special appropriation?
It's in the recycle center.
Okay.
We'll work with them, and if we do get the approval, then we'll, we're going, making sure we get the money available.
Off the hand, is it, is it eighty, twenty, fifty, fifty, sixty, forty?
Fifty, fifty.
Fifty, fifty.
Okay, okay.
But up only to a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so we would be responsible for the?
Right.
Okay.
Anything that helps. Like to approve it or whatever. I just had Mr. Gargley sign if you'd like to approve it. Then I'll have the council president sign it if they approve it.
What's your, it's your pleasure here, gentlemen.
So this is just to seek out the grant? That's what you're looking for today, correct?
We have to have a financial commitment letter stating that if we do get the grant, that we will come up with some money.
Okay, okay. And again, we would have to go to the, the county council to do that.
Right. Do that by consent, you want to do that by a motion?
Do it by motion. To make a motion that we, we go after our grant and give Mr. White the authority to do that. Try to take care of our recycling needs.
I'll second. Motion, Mr. Wright, second, Mr. Burton, any other questions to David? Right, all those in favor would say aye.
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 Next thing I was gonna bring up is we did pour the bridge deck on County Road one thousand east last Tuesday. Like at four thirty in the morning. So I did bring you some pictures if you have them.
Seems like some of those were on that Facebook.
Yeah, I think so.
Tony loves to get that information out there. I think that's one of the pictures on Facebook.
That bridge, hopefully by the middle of October, will be back open to what we're shooting for. They'll be, they have to take this week off to let it cure for a week and break the concrete, so. And then we'll hopefully come back in here in the next couple of weeks, start working on getting that back open.
See you.
And then been working on other road projects, trying to get those completed for the year or so. Our building, I talked to that gentleman last week. He's still on schedule, probably not next week, the following week, to come in and start on that, so. Get that done here next month or so.
Have we done any ground prep work for that?
Yeah, it's all ready.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I, we've got the stone, everything's leveled out, everything, so that's all ready. That's all I have, my huge one, that big thing.
Oh, yes. Did you have, do you have any comments on that four hundred west at the Cardinal Greenway?
Yeah, I'll have to email that lady back. The railroad is the one that stopped us on that. They didn't want us working in there right away. And actually, there was never a trail over that portion of it. They always used the road to go over that, so.
I, I would appreciate if you'd follow up with her and let her know that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we could find the right person to pull down the railroad to get over that, it'd be nice to finish what we started. But we had to make that road a little gradual because the farmers couldn't get their semis over it. So that's where that kind of all started, why we paved that there, so.
All righty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is Melissa in the room? Or Chris? She's hiding back there. She's hiding, okay. Good morning, how are you today?
How are you?
All right.
So I have a couple of things I think to talk about this morning. First is the pretrial, pretrial grant update. So during the October, April fourth meeting, when I was seeking approval to apply for the grant application for pretrial services, there was a discussion about the possibility of the funding being for pretrial to look similar to the current year. And this year was the first year that they did some cuts where they capped the benefits for our pretrial service staff at thirty percent and for their benefits. And so this is for three full-time probation officers assigned to the pretrial court services program. So during that, to be proactive, we had a discussion about the commissioners planning ahead and being proactive and including that in their budget requests for the upcoming year. And so in the event that the cuts did actually occur, so we received our grant award, and they did fund us similar, pretty much like last year. They funded our salaries, at full salaries. They capped the benefits at thirty percent. And it also includes a supervisor stipend for the coordinator and then fifteen thousand dollars for public defenders for their appearance at the meaningful first appearances. So our total grant award is two hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars. And again, that covers salary for three full-time probation officers, the stipend for the coordinator, and the fifteen thousand dollars for the public defender. And so the deficit for the seventy percent ends up being fifty nine thousand and seventy four dollars.
And again, we're, we're talking about the FICA, and we're talking about the benefits, which we cover anyway. Okay, so.
Yes, so the other, essentially, the remaining portion is saving the county about two hundred thousand dollars to do this grant.
And, and the FICA and all those, that's already in the budget.
Um, it's in the budget. I suppose we could ask Jim if there's a raise that's considered. Does that go on top of this, or do we just keep it with what the, the state says is the salary?
Okay, keep this as a simple answer. As long as the council, when they did last year, accept that increase, they agreed to incorporate that increase and have our general fund pay that. I assume we'll continue that. I will say that my office does establish and recommend to the council X number of dollars for FICA for a few of those benefit type items in the general funds budget under the commissioners department. And we'll do the same thing as we do the adoption for this two thousand twenty three budget. We will have an amount of there that will incorporate enough for that.
Okay.
And if it gets approved on it. To help you answer.
It does, thank you.
Yeah.
So we took the numbers, and that's how we came up with the deficit of what the county says. This is what the benefits package is for this position, and so that's how we figure with.
And it used to be that grant paid all those amounts, so now the general funds picking up that difference, and we would have it in there to keep that going in twenty three. Should that be the council's choice?
Okay. We will pay the FICA as determined by the council.
And, and the benefits, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that's just the, the remaining portion, the seventy percent for the fifty nine thousand seventy four dollars. So I just wanted to make you aware that we've had previous conversations about it before we move forward with meeting with the council.
Very good. Questions?
Do you want to talk about the opioid settlement?
I, I would go right ahead, and I haven't talked to these fellows about it much, so.
Okay. I brought a one-page kind of summary, if that's helpful. Because it has, it has an exhibit E that's multiple pages, so we tried to condense that to, to be kind of more user-friendly. But the opioid settlement funds are a result of a multi-state litigation. That was negotiated over the past three years with various opioid companies. And the funds are allocated into abatement or restricted funds. So it has very restrictive spending category, it has three categories that you can spend the money in. It can be treatment prevention or other, but even other is pretty prescriptive. It doesn't fall into, oh, you can just spend it on anything. It's looking at how do you address the opioid crisis and what you're experiencing here locally and like many other counties throughout the state and the country. The first disbursement, though, is expected early fall. They haven't told us a date, we don't know, but we thought we would be a little bit more proactive in terms of, do we want to set up a non-reverting fund for these? So that way, when the funds do come in, since we don't know when that will happen, the treasurer's office and the auditor's office will know where to put it. Because they are pretty restrictive in terms of how you can spend the money. I would hate for us to spend the money and then find ourselves in a bad situation later on. There will be an annual report that's gonna be required to disclose how you've used that money. The FSSA will be the one who's developing that report, and they haven't provided any information yet as to what will be on there. If I had to guess, it's gonna be requiring us to explain how we spent the funds and how that's impacting the opioid crisis. explain how we spend the funds and how that's impacting the opioid crisis. There is also in the code 4-6-15-4 subsection A4 that says that communities receiving funds less than a total $1,000 in restricted funds, right? And a single year is automatically going to be directed to the county. So there'll be some additional funds coming this way. If it's their unrestricted portion, they get that portion regardless of the amount. But if it's the restricted, the abatement funds, we will be getting those for anything that's under $1,000. This actual settlement is supposed to last over the next 18 years. With the first dispersment being the largest, so they're going to do two years of dispersment this year sometime this fall. And so it's likely going to be the largest amount and they fluctuate every year as to how much money is going to be coming in. Previous conversation we've utilized, we've had permission to utilize the local justice reinvestment advisory council to develop a work group about making some recommendations about the use of these funds. And so the work group has been meeting. We've been working through it, it's called exhibit E that outlines all these parameters that you can use it. And really what we've been trying to do is stay away from things that we know we can get other grant funds to, to fund and really trying to prioritize things that are harder to get funding, like federal grants, things that are harder to sustain, to make informed decisions about what recommendations might be the best. And ultimately, we'll be making that presentation to the commissioners because the decision will, is, you guys are charged with the decision of how to spend this, this funds. So the, the attorney general is encouraging neighboring communities to partner together to make the best use of the funds. Ultimately, they can decide to spend it in those required areas, how they see fit. So right now, we're currently working through with the vision of Grant County and reaching out to some of the other cohorts.
But in this, forgive me if I zoned out for a second, but we can, we can utilize these funds toward drug court, prevention, training, interactive, interactive things with offenders and helping them not to be repeat offenders. Rehabilitation is, is all a part of this that we can focus that opioid money toward.
Yeah, so yes, you can look at any problem solving courts. You can look at problem solving courts, sustainability efforts that are going to help with that. You can look at, there are some preventative, there's a whole section about treatment. And there's some about prevention as well. And then there is some for training, but the training is very specific. So it can't be, we'd like to go to training or we'd like to do this or that. It's very specific.
But we can't buy new sheriff cars.
Right.
Sorry, Joe.
I don't think equipment's any of that. So I, the reason, I guess, I thought it would be helpful to bring it up would be establishing that fund because the money, we don't know when, all it says is fall. So we know it's coming, we just don't know when. So.
Plus, I didn't realize this was going to be a topic today, but we did just receive some information last week in my office about this. There's a lot of questions. Board of the council sent down a memo, a real brief one. They've already got a couple of funds established for this purpose, it looks like. So we'll use their fund numbers, of course, we comply with what their requirements are. We couldn't tell who is going to be establishing the budget for those funds and deciding who gets to establish that. Normally, the county council's involved. You mentioned the commissioners, so I, I don't know how that's going to be yet. We need to make sure of that.
It's my understanding that the commissioners will make the decision about how their, how it's supposed to be spent. And then they will make that recommendation to the county council.
To appropriate.
I want to say, because always the county council has the final call when it comes to appropriations, at least that's the normal vote. So we haven't seen it actually says that yet. If you have information we don't have, we probably need to see that.
I believe the commissioners received the letter.
We, I received this. I mean, I saw, but this doesn't really tell us too much.
And a little bit of direction from Indiana Association of Candidates that that was the implication. So we've got a meeting this week, we'll see if we.
I guess if you hear something, make sure we get that in my own, because we don't want to do that until that's established and we know what happens there.
Angie has a copy of that letter.
Just got it.
I gave it to her last week.
Must have been late.
Probably Thursday, Friday.
So just trying to look ahead, thinking about that, because it's a significant amount of money that we're going to be looking at over the next 18 years.
It's not a grant, I'm assuming.
It is not.
So it's not going to be a federal grant requirement situation.
There is a report requirement.
Well, but it's not a grant, I guess, the distinction there, I guess, we need to make sure of, too.
Yep.
And you know, I saw FSSA is the agency involved in that. That's a federal agency. So I wondered, is this grant, is it not grant? It's from a class action lawsuit.
Right, but why is it FSSA doing it? It's just kind of odd. It, it's a new ballgame, so to speak, with this one, so. Want to make sure we don't strike.
We opted into the, to the lawsuit because they, they settled, we get part of the settlement.
I saw it goes through 2038. I mean, there's a long, long inter.
So we have kind of the breakdowns of what we'll anticipate getting from year to year, if you're interested in having that. We've just been.
And we saw the schedule.
Okay, yeah, we've just been in communication. Once we heard that it was coming, we were trying to figure out.
We couldn't wait till for sure who was going to be in charge of deciding what, when and where, as far as the use of the money. We really didn't see anything about that yet. If the judges were involved or not, you know, we couldn't tell, so.
Yeah, so from my understanding, it's the commissioners who decide how and make the recommendation for it to be appropriated by the council.
So it still takes both bodies to get it done.
Okay.
And so you mentioned that, that there is a committee. Don't need to know who, but what kind of positions are on that committee?
So a lot of the things that are coming through, especially when it involves like court services, there is what's called a local justice reinvestment advisory council. We call the J-RAC. And they have a lot of community stakeholders. So it's, it mirrors the community corrections advisory board with the addition of county council member. So at our last meeting, we discussed having a committee of those who are interested in kind of brainstorming this potential opportunity. And so people who wanted to be part of that conversation are all on that work, that work group.
And just sort of, I noticed we're talking roughly 1.4 plus million dollars for this county, for Grant County government, not counting City of Marion and some other communities. So it's, there's a chunk of money involved over that period of time. And that's actually been our period of time. My understanding is that covers the entire up through 2038. There were two, two amounts of money involved, 1.3 or 4 was part of it, and there was another maybe four by 100,000. So it could be just under 2 million total.
I think it's about 1.8, but because they have, they haven't broken into restricted and unrestricted.
And there's a question about that, what does that mean? You know, we, we haven't seen enough to tell us what restricted, unrestricted means either. Yeah, so. A lot of questions when it comes to how it gets established and utilized.
And I'm not sure even the unrestricted is truly unrestricted.
What does that mean?
Yeah, as, as I understand the unrestricted, it's unrestricted within the confines of a restriction. You have to continue to focus the money toward courts, prevention, training, that type of thing, so.
Yeah, we need more information before we proceed.
So just so you, it's coming. So that was kind of why I wanted to bring it up. It's not necessarily a, necessarily a court services thing, it's a county that we, because we're working in the local J-RAC, we know about, so.
I, I, I think that the, the J-RAC and the committee will work well in, in helping to advise and direct us to make sure we're just exactly where the, the state requires us to be, and I appreciate that. Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we continue under old business, solar ordinance proposal. Over the next few moments, we will work through our procedure as we have before us, we have the option of looking at the draft we sent to the area plan commission, or by default, allowing draft seven to become the ordinance by October the first. Again, for historical purposes, January, February of 21, commissioners discussed potential state legislation that would have been adverse to local home rule regarding so, solar energy. This sparked concerns of an ordinance being enacted prior to July 1st of 2021. Indiana State Legislature backed off pushing mandatory regulation to recommend less legislation which allowed Grant County to begin a dialogue with solar energy systems. Following October 18 of 2021, the commissioners' solar summit meeting and four-plus months of research developed discussing with department heads, including highway drainage, area plan, emergency management, and four separate drafts. Draft four of the Grant County Solar Ordinance was sent to the area plan for review and recommendation by the commissioners. At that time, the ordinance was considered 90% complete, but some loose ends to tie up. Particular ordinance for consideration reviewed 32 counties averaged their requirements. February of '22, APC meeting did not have a forum. Commissioners' ordinance draft was set aside by APC on March 7th of 2022 with no apparent review or discussion to content. APC held two solar workshops since taking over the ordinance review. Board of Zoning Appeals has been very influential in the APC decision, although BZA has no authority regarding ordinance adoption or recommendations. State law states the BZA has no place in ordinance development, development and in further separation of powers. Area Plan conducted public hearing regarding solar on April 4, 2022. Following a cumulative six months of discussion, the APC set aside commissioners' proposed ordinance. APC chose to recommend the commissioners' ordinance provided by Mr. Ed Hartman, BZA chairman, without public review of the proposed ordinance or conversation with the lawyer that drafted the proposed ordinance for Mr. Hartman. This ordinance was now referred to as draft seven or certified ordinance recommendation and was voted on without ever being publicly reviewed. Board of Commissioners received the certification of the proposed ordinance on April 8th, excuse me, 18th of 2022 and were required to act within 90 days by July 17th of 2022, or said ordinance became effective without their action. At our meeting on July 5, the Board of Commissioners rejected the draft seven and sent back a completed draft four for review. The APC after a public hearing voted no. And so we have a decision to make, as I mentioned just earlier. We have a draft four that we can enact or a draft seven that can be basically enacted by default by October 1st. According to our legal ramifications, the lawyers have said all public, public hearings have been completed. We do have options, but my recommendation would be to discuss as the elected officials, the pros and cons for draft four versus draft seven, and decide on what we do about the ordinance. We do have to make a decision to act on the ordinance or to allow the other to be enacted by default, and that would be our first priority today. So do you have thoughts, gentlemen, on our procedure or statements about one or the other?
Well, my kind of conclusion, I cannot support number four. I support ordinance number seven with the setback on solar or a moratorium to allow time for more review.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Since becoming a commissioner, I've spent most of my time working on this particular item in front of us. And I have, I have lived it, breathed it, slept it all the time. And I know you have too, as, as farmers and, and landowners. So, you know, my first, first act was to try to figure out, okay, what is the concerns of the constituents? And I've heard drainage issues, hazardous waste materials, decommissioning, buffer concerns, adjacent property owners' rights, loss of current farming associated jobs, labor for construction, wildlife concerns, potential fire hazard, efficiency of solar, economic impact to the county or the possibility of it, economic development monies depends upon the size of the project. And, and I do understand that there are about 36 different families represented by the solar companies that have already signed contracts. One of the things I've also found out that we're two to five years out from a shovel going into the ground for these particular items. Had 81 days of homework, visited and numerous phone calls with multiple farmers and landowners. I've driven sites here in Grant County for potential solar farms with the people who have actually signed contracts. I've attended APC meetings, BZA meetings, drainage and other board meetings. I've visited a solar site and the main thing I pray for wisdom. Here's my conclusion. We have an ordinance that will protect homeowners and farmers with the opportunity to work with solar companies to bring revenue into our community. Grant County's ordinance is one of the more restrictive ordinances in the state. Each project, if they still so choose to come, will bring in installation jobs for many within our area. We do not have to supply services such as water and sewer, economic dollars to get them to come, or give the land to them to attract them. They will be paying a premium rental to landowners for the next 30 years or more. They are not seeking a bond or tax incremental financing that we could be responsible for if they fail. On another note, I want to share with you one more thought that is in front of us. Automakers are jumping on the EV bandwagon and even some are saying they will not have a combustible engine by 2035. It's only 12 years away. In Indiana, 47% of our corn goes to the ethanol plants. And I would say here in Grant County is probably higher, as we have an ethanol plant right here and transportation cost is a big cost to farmers who are trying to make the most profit for their grain. So in the next decade, we will see less demand for corn to produce ethanol, which I believe will drive the price of corn down due to supply and demand. For farmers and landowners, they will possibly be in a volatile market within the next decade. If I were a farmer or a landowner, I would want to have the opportunity to diversify my portfolio of land and have solar as an option. I have so many people tell me, we must get this right. And I'm voting today for the future of Grant County and all the towns and cities that I represent. I believe with all my heart, soul and mind, that I am making the right decision. And so if the chair is ready for a motion.
Mr. President, I stand for a point of order. I think you need to hear me for just a minute.
Point of order on, on what part of this discussion?
That draft four should not be submitted for a vote because it conflicts with state code. After an independent review by an attorney, it was discovered that there is a glaring problem with draft four. Thought you needed to know that before you voted. If you want me to continue, I'll go into it a little more.
I'm reviewing Robert's rules board right now. At this point, I will deny that and ask you to sit down.
So again, I would make a motion that we accept draft four. And I don't have an ordinance number. Is that something to assign? Draft seven, or number seven. Ordinance number seven, 2022. And that'd be my motion.
Hope I hear the motion correctly. It is to adopt draft four as ordinance number seven.
That's correct. That's correct.
I will second that for discussion purpose. We can discuss that if you'd like, Mike, you made a statement if you want to do some any follow up to that.
Statement stands.
With regard to the the point order, I believe that all of the the items are in check. Anything that does not comply with state law, I believe in any ordinance is already dropped according to the law. And I, in our review, we have taken almost all of these things from from other drafts as well, so I would, I would continue to support and move forward Draft Number Four. Any other thoughts? Okay, we are ready to call a question on the the motion at hand by Mister Mister Wright, who moved to approve Draft Number Four as ordinance number seven, two thousand and twenty two. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposing?
Yeah.
Carried two to one negative vote. That is moving forward and we will once again have it signed, recorded and reviewed. Second question that we need to discuss under this ordinance is we've had APC recommendation, we have had Drainage Board make a recommendation, not unanimously, of course, to talk about a moratorium, want to suggest that, I think, six months, want to suggest it a year. And so again, we need to discuss that process as well. Thoughts, gentlemen?
I'll speak to that. Went back and just kind of took a look at some past moratoriums that we've done, windmills being one. That moratorium was granted or executed in two thousand and fourteen. That's a long time to be in a moratorium. Know a lot of the people were asking for a one year moratorium. I think, I think within a one year, I don't think we'll be farther along than what we are now with knowledge. I think we'll just go that back to the same thing, we're seeing kind of affirmation before. I think we have addressed a lot of different things. There are so many stopgaps that solar companies have to go through. One being the power company. My understanding, it's probably about a two year wait right now. That's my understanding. The second thing is the county council, I'm sure they're going to be coming to us wanting a tax abatement. There's a lot of leverage in a tax abatement that if homeowners are being boxed out or anything like that, the county council can go ahead and not debate due to their satisfaction of what they're wanting to do. Same way with the Drainage Board, the Drainage Board has a final say in this as well, they are going to all turn down the project, they all can. So I, I think there's a lot of stop, stopgaps that protects us to what I believe our constituents are asking us to do. And so with that in mind, that is the reason I did what I did today, that there's so many different things to hold up this process or to have them change a plan to make sure drainage is correct. And I not only worry about the farmer's drainage, I worry about the drainage on our roads. So I, I just think that there's enough leeway in that ordinance of ordinance now seven, two thousand and twenty two that that there's protection for people.
So the question again we wrestle with, do we enact any type of a moratorium? Or leave it as is, recognizing the, the things that have to be jumped through in the timeframe that we still have to modify in the future?
So is it your regular motion? Or does this take a motion?
We, we can have a motion or if we decide not to move forward, it just discussion and we go on, whatever you want to do.
I, I think it probably ought to be enough of a motion.
Okay.
And that, that way it's clear. I, I would say we do not put this into moratorium as a motion. And, you know, we can review this process and we can review the ordinance at any time. And so I'm just trying to think if it would be good. Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and make that motion, no more toward, no more toward.
Thank you. Mike already said where he is on that, so I, I will, I will second that for further discussion, any discussion. Okay. No further discussion, all those in favor of no moratorium would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And as opposed to? No. Carried two to one negative vote. So that's where we are right now with the solar ordinance proposition. We will sign that and move forward. And all the powers that be will be looking at it even more attentively, I'm sure. All right, we will move on to new business. We have Mister Andrew Cullen, Public Defender's Commission, who has been with us on the line. Are you still there, Andrew?
I am. Thank you for having me, sir.
Good, thank you. It's been a while since we've talked about Public Defender's Commission and then with the request for a reappointment, we figured we'd better come up to speed on all that's going on with Public Defender, so thank you for kind of briefing us today.
Oh, my pleasure. I'm happy to address any questions. I think the, the reason that I was asked to attend is because we entered into discussions about the fact that the Commission's appointment, just for those listening, the county public defender boards in most counties are based on state statute. And Grant County fits into the sort of the standard definition for most counties, which is there is a three member board. One member is appointed by the county commissioners. One member is appointed jointly by the judges who exercise juvenile or criminal jurisdiction, which in Grant County, I believe that's all of your judges have some of that. And then one appointment who must be a member, a resident of the county is appointed by us, the Public Defender Commission. And currently Joe Lewis is the commissioner, the commission's, Public Defender Commission's appointment to the Grant County Board. And by all accounts, has served admirably and has indicated a willingness to accept a reappointment if the commission were to make it. And so at this point in time, barring any comments from the Commissioners or anyone else, we don't intend to re-advertise that position. Instead, staff's intention is to recommend that Joe Lewis be reappointed for another three year term. And that will happen at our next commission meeting, which was supposed to be this week, and I believe will be next now due to a scheduling issue. So that's, I think, the main reason for our discussion. The other two members of your board, according to our records, Rodney McKeller, who is appointed by the Commissioners. We have that his term expired in two thousand and twenty one in January. And then we have Mike Klein, appointed by the judges. Same, his term expired in December of two thousand and twenty one. This is not a problem, those terms carry over until the appointing authority either reappoints or appoints someone new. So it might be something you want to take a look at, whether or not you'd like to go ahead and re-up your appointment, Mister McKeller to the board. We have no objections to any of the work the board's been doing. I'm not here for any reason other than to provide information and answer any questions. The public defense system in Grant County is functioning fully within the guidelines and parameters of statute and the commission's guidelines. And we're, we're happy to work with, with, you know, Lisa Morris and Bruce Elliott and all the other folks that do a great job running your system. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions about public defending? By any, any definition, are you seeing a over taxation of lawyers that are doing public defender work? Are we swamped? Are we getting folks taken care of with due process, moving them efficiently through the, the arraignment and the procedures that have to go before trial?
So I think it would be a little unfair for me to speak with a great amount of authority on that, not being in your courthouse on a daily basis. But I would just say that typically things come to our attention at the PD Commission, you know, when there is a problem. And we have not had any complaints about Grant County. I think that's the best way I could answer that.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you. So we need to review our appointment, see if Mister McKeller is, is willing to continue to serve. And Mister Lewis will be reappointed by, by your, your group next week, you think.
So staff's going to recommend he be reappointed, there were no other appointments, so I can't imagine there would be a problem. But yes, I can't say for sure until the commission takes action, but yes.
Very good. Is Mister Klein willing to re-up or not?
I have not asked him that question.
And, and whose, whose appointment is he?
So he is appointed by the judges who exercise criminal juris- and juvenile jurisdiction. The statute specifically says that, you know, judges appoint jointly in counties if that judge exercises juvenile or criminal jurisdiction. I think in Grant County, all the judges have some criminal or juvenile jurisdiction. May be wrong on that, some may only do civil work or that may have changed since I've been aware. So effectively, I think it's a joint decision by all the judges.
Right, we thank you for the update and we will make sure that we talk with Mister McKeller at our earliest convenience this week. In fact, I try and do it even this afternoon, especially if he's over at the courthouse today.
Thank you, and we don't need anything formal, we don't need enough formal, you know, document or anything like that. As long as the Commissioners take action, it's reflected in your minutes and somebody notifies me, that's all we need from you.
Very good. Those are what term? Four year?
Three years.
That's a three year term, okay.
So is that enough in the minutes to make sure that we would reach out to Mister McKeller?
We reach out to Mister McKeller and, and as our current appointment and ask if he's willing to continue to serve. All right, anything else, Andrew?
Thank you for having me, we're always here to help and support if there's anything we can do in any way. I hope you do continue to reach out and thank you again for your time.
Thank you, sir. Right, next on our new business, Envoy Jonathan White.
Yes. Yep. Good morning. Thank you very much for allowing us an opportunity here. Knowing that we have already aligned ourselves up, up with the county. We, this particular topic is the request for proposals for a jail feasibility, excuse me, jail feasibility study and assessment. Previously been drafted and distributed and reviewed. This is just in a move to be transparent with our intent to get the draft approved, submitted out to a handful of folks that regularly do this throughout the counties and that throughout the state. And to get a selection done here in a matter of just a couple of weeks here. One point of comment would be understanding who would be on the steering committee, meaning once the submissions are accepted by us or received by us, we would then need to have some format where we can submit them to a steering committee, which typically consists of maybe one, one commissioner, one council member and, and incoming sheriff or existing sheriff.
I, I believe we already established who our subcommittee or review committee would be.
Okay. Maybe that just didn't make it to me, apologies.
Like Rich helped us do that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll, we'll try and either connect with him again or, or we can send those names.
Yeah, just sending the names would be perfect, thank you.
All right. So by, by signing on with Envoy, we've already given you approval to do this, or do we need to endorse this particular package in front of us, Jonathan?
This is just an endorsement, again, this is a, a level of transparency that you may not have seen before. So we, by law and statute, did not need to submit this for approval, but we wanted to share it with the group so you could see what we were doing and see the steps we were taking.
Any questions on this, gentlemen? This again is so that we're getting a, a real, real true picture of what our assessment on the jail is, is, is like, whether we can repair what we've got or replace. And so this is part of that process of fact finding and getting the appropriate data we need. With your consent, we've asked Envoy to continue, yes.
Appreciate that, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Any other questions for Jonathan this morning? Thank you for holding on so long, Jonathan.
Absolutely, no problem. Thank you.
All right. Okay, next, Veterans Affairs, Brad has a resolution that he'd like to introduce to us.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
I've just, I, I think all of you have a copy of this. It's just a resolution that, what I received they developed for, it's called Operation Green Light. Veterans, military members, when they're getting out of the military, a lot of stress, trying to adapt to change. If you weren't in the military, unfortunately, you don't know what that stress is. So it's Operation Green Light is just bringing businesses and individuals to show those veterans that they're in support of them. So it's just asking from October one to Veterans Day, businesses and residents to put a green light in their window to show veterans that.
This recommendation before us, gentlemen, thoughts?
I think it's great recognizing our veterans and for those who would participate, thanks. Chair is ready for a motion.
I'm happy to receive a motion.
And this resolution number would be? Three. Mr. Bartley, I would move that we pass resolution number three, two thousand and twenty two.
Second, motion with support. Mister Wright said, Mister Burton, on the resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans from October first through November eleventh. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is carried unanimously. I just want to know, are you subliminally trying to tell us with green, about green?
Josh is actually what I went on today. Wasn't even thinking about it, forgot there was a Commissioner.
All right. Thank you, appreciate it. Make sure my wife and I go get a green light. Thank you, appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
All right, our reporter Cathy, boy, you've been waiting patiently, thank you.
Good morning. Okay, I got three agreements. From my software company. One is getting my meets and bounds books digitized. And one is a cleanup on the subdivisions because so over the years, they've been put in so many different ways. So we're trying to get the correct ways in there. So that's a project for that, and the other one is to get, to input all the book and pages so searchers are able to search. to get, to input all the book and pages so searchers are able to search by book and page. And I had him add the signatures for you guys on here. So have the correct ones. And they've all been approved through Kyle.
So you said three different ones. I see the subdivision database at $2,000.
It's probably the book of page one you don't have because after I sent it to Justin, I got it and sent it to Kyle. So that's probably the one we don't have. And it's for $2,000.
I see 2,000 for the subdivision. I see 14, 79930 for professional services on scan capture images, Alka-Lat or party index and then project resource management. Could that possibly?
That's the subdivision. I mean, that's the meets and bounds books, the old books. They did the city books, but they didn't do the township books. So and then the 5,000 is for the putting the book and page numbers and so they can be searched that way.
That's the one they don't see.
And is this, is this money in your?
Perpetuation fund, yes.
Yes, okay. And did you, did you receive other, any other bids or anything?
This is my software company. So that's the only they're the ones who do it.
Okay. So they, I mean, so everything talks.
Yes.
To each other. Yes, I understand that. Okay, very good.
So they need to actually sign or just give you permission? So?
I had him add because I always was under the impression, anything I sign, them guys have to sign off too. So I told him to add anything with you guys' signatures to it.
That's the way our attorney likes it, yes.
Yes.
Right. Other questions? You ready for a motion, gentlemen? This is all with Fiddler Technology.
Yes.
So this, we can do this in one motion as we accept the report as provided by Ms. Boyd. Is that correct?
And if you want to note the amount.
Okay, I would make a motion that we accept Ms. Boyd's estimates to bring us up into technology of today. The amount of $2,000 for subdivision data based work and anchor training. As well as 14,799 dollars to and 30 cents, sorry. The scan capture, all that and letter party index and project resource management and import. And then the last thing is the $5,000 to set for again.
Book and pages.
Book, that book and pages. I would make that as a motion.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Wright, second, Mr. Burton. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye. Aye, aye. It is carried. Thank you.
Do you want to sign them now or are we leaving with Justin and he can, if you bring them up to me when you're done or?
Why don't you leave them with Justin and he'll snag as people get out of there and sound that.
Perfect.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda courthouse discovery project, we have been working on different projects to help alleviate any more water retention. We've worked with multiple individuals on individual projects. So we have Dave's excavating that is proposing to furnish labor equipment and material to perform individual visual inspection of our downspouts. I'm sure their effectiveness of the discharge of the roof water. For the last 17 years, we've always considered the possibility that these downspouts may be leaking water into the building, but have never done anything to actually scope them. This will this will allow us to run those cameras through there, do any televising and jet clean that needs to be done in order to open up any type of debris that may be in our downspouts. So we have that Dave's excavating well, at $10,000. Then another thing that we, we have, and we can take these separately, or if you want to try and do them all as a package, we will, but this is falling under maintenance and building repairs. So it can be done while. I mean, there's separate contracts. It may be smarter to do them separately. I think so. So I, I would at least give you that Dave's excavating first as a part of this this process that we're trying to learn and take care of our courthouse. Thoughts, comments, discussion on that?
Chair ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we accept Dave's excavating's proposal to, for the downspout drain cleaning as well as give us a snapshot of what it really looks like.
Second.
Have a motion, Mr. Wright, second, Mr. Burton. Discussion on that?
Now we do, that is in funds that we have available. Is that correct?
Yes, we have, we have funds that, well, probably our next couple of items, six and seven as well, or at least six, will be trying to utilize some of those funds that we have yet this year. Well, good. So we have a motion on Dave's excavating. All those in favor would be to say aye. Aye, aye. It is carried. Next, we have Atlas Building Services. Contractually, we have a quote of $39,773 to install new metal aluminum flashing along the base stone, the courthouse out over the foundation that extends downward to cover below grade or to the waterproofing mat. So this will be a part of, again, sealing off any type of areas where water gets in. Again, this is under our threshold so that we can take this, this quote and, and run with it.
I made a motion to approve the quote from Atlas Building Services. In the amount of $39,773.
And second. Motion, Mr. Burton, second, Mr. Wright. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye. Aye, aye. It is carried. Two other items that we, we have, we have been working with Michael Holstead of Holstead Architects. He's done a couple of gratis walkthroughs of buildings, Salem Bank, the, the county building, and looking at, at some of our concerns. And this, this item here from Holstead, we, we are asking him to do some more engineering review and look at, at some things. And that, that would cost us $15,000, $1,000 that can come out of our contractual surface to have him as a local individual prompt us on one direction and what is good or bad for, since he's constructed Ridley Tower and done a super job there. I think he will be a great asset to us.
So you're looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
I hope you can bring the quote from Holstead Architects in the amount of not to exceed $15,000.
Second. Motion with support. We want to discuss that.
Yeah, I appreciate you adding that in there, not to exceed that. I'm sure Mike's kind of just kind of taking a look at it, wanting to make sure he's got his bases covered.
Yes.
But it's not to exceed.
Not to exceed how far.
He has to go. That's all we're discussing.
All righty. Motion, I forget, that was Mr. Burton?
Yes.
And second, Mr. Wright. Excuse me, all those in favor would say aye. Aye, aye. It is carried. All right. Last item on work for the courthouse right now. We have Patriot Engineering and Environmental that again, I, I mentioned, Mr. Holstead had already been doing some work for us. Was recommended to, in our discernment process, he recommended that we sink four dry wells on the courthouse square so that we know the exact water table and, and whether we have water coming in underground, which we do have a little bit of seepage in a couple of corners. And what that level is so that, again, we make proper decisions on, on whether we have to seal the entire lower level again or, or not. So this, this comes as a recommendation and move forward. And the geotechnical engineering investment is $21,000. And they also have an option, past one, which they would locate prior utility inclusion of certain meters, concrete protective pads, casings and backfilling holes as necessary. So it looks like a total of 24, 24, 24, 2. So I would recommend that as well.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, Mr. Burton, second, Mr. Wright. Any further discussion?
This is a question, I guess, verification. The first time I've seen these, but is Holstead Architects involved with Atlas Building Services and Patriot?
They have, they made the initial inquiry as to their, their interest in, in giving us a quote. That's why there's a notation that they were involved in the information.
So also is kind of involved with the, also soliciting or planning?
Sending out quotes for us.
Okay. I saw their name on here.
We, we wanted to make sure that we weren't trying to juggle those things. We thought Mr. Holstead would be able to coordinate them better for us.
Thank you.
Ready? We have a motion with support. All those in favor would say aye. Aye, aye. It is carried. And we continue to move forward on that. And now we want to do some other things. Justin, annex carpet proposal.
So in your package, you'd have the three bids for carpeting for the third floor of this building here. Lowest and best comes from Stags and that would be my recommendation, $19,433.81.
Okay. I was supposed to speak to that. I, I've walked some of these places and stuff and the carpet is looking pretty last time we put some down, but I think it's been a while. So I think to clean up the area and be responsible for what we have as far as buildings, I guess money will spend.
I want to, correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to say that the third floor hasn't been touched like some of our other areas. We're still dealing with 20, 25 year old carpet up there.
25, 30.
Okay. All righty. So we're in the process of hitting different levels and trying to bring them up. We have the same issue at the courthouse as well with carpet and paint that needs facelifted too. So that may yet be coming yet this year, right?
It's possible for the courthouse. And then we would look at doing the second floor, probably the beginning of next year, this building.
Okay.
And we do have the funds in our account.
Currently, yes.
All right. We have the recommendation from the administrator on Stags quote.
I'd make a motion that we accept Stags quoted $19,433.81.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Wright, second, Mr. Burton. Any other discussion? Right. This isn't the appropriate time, but I'm going to go ahead and say it too. We've mentioned a couple of things about we're having to fix things at the, at the highway department. We continue to fix things like here. Something else we have never done is have a deferred maintenance program. And I really think that somehow or another, we need to, to really discuss that and establish it so that as these things, they're going to continue to come at us, we're going to continue to put it, whether we're in a new building or we're still taking care of our, our old buildings. It's a cycle of life and if we don't prepare for it, then we get caught and we, we have to pay out money. So just a, a thought and I'm sorry to interrupt our, not sorry, our vote on that. We do have a motion with support on the Stags quote and I would say all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye. And just to piggyback on your comments there. Right. Yeah, I, maintenance is so important. We don't have a good maintenance program. Continue to be reactive instead of proactive. Trying to fix our buildings and keep up with things. So I would, I would highly recommend that we really take a look at that. And it sounds like Justin is the, the guy to kind of bring us forward things and just kind of let us know what's going on. I know I want to get around all the buildings, take a look at them as well and, and see what we have. And I've, I've done some of that over at the courthouse as well as here. And we are making some improvements as we go. So.
Right. I think we've got one more item under, Justin.
Two new employees for AMS department, both EMT supervisors. They have submitted requests. Be on the cell phone allowance.
Right. This is a normal request for those that have draw 24/7. And so what's your prerogative on that, gentlemen?
A motion to approve.
Now, second. Motion, Mr. Burton, second, Mr. Wright to approve the level two requests as presented. All those in favor would say aye. Aye, aye. It is carried. Right.
I do have a number eight to add. We've got Megan Boardman here for the blood drive.
Oh. Ready? Megan, come on up.
Thank you. But I wanted to propose dates for 2023. You guys did phenomenally for us for Grant County and its patients in 2022. We collected 49 units of blood, which is 147 patients impacted at the Grant County Blood Drive. So me and Justin are going to work on a strategy to do even better this year with getting the city of Mary involved and stuff. So we wanted to propose the following dates for 2023. They mirror very closely what we did this year. So January 12th, March 29th, June 7th, August 17th, and November 15th, all on blood mobiles.
And it seemed to work well. I think you.
Yeah, the bank, yeah. Yeah, it was really, it's a really good, it kind of involves the bank too, as far as their staff and, and stuff. And we obviously market it and propose it and publicize it to our donor base in the area. And then you guys promote it with your employees and stuff. And it's just this year's been tough and you guys were honestly a really a light beacon, a hope, as we say, because it's just been a tough year with COVID and a lot of businesses staying remote and not necessarily getting back in the office. And we rely, I mean, the majority of our blood supply comes from drives in the community. It's not done at brick and mortar, what we call brick and mortar donor centers. It's meeting our community where they are and giving them hopefully an easy, convenient way to, you know, save lives.
Good job.
Yeah, just submit those super approval.
Shall we? This far out, I don't think we have any major concerns since technically it's off site.
Yeah.
Anyway, so I think it'd be appropriate for us to go ahead and adopt these for the blood drive schedule for 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, Mr. Burton, second, Mr. Wright. All those in favor would say aye.
Thank you, Red.
All right. Gentlemen, are you aware of other new business?
Just, just for or the Grant County Council outstanding budget issue. Or the Grand County Council outstanding budget issues. That's a report from you. That's that's the way I understand it. Great report. I appreciate that. Just kind of looking through. Is there anything because is there anything you need from us commissioners? There's a couple of things that you've got listed in here for us, establishing on salary items. If I go for health insurance.
That's that's something I can, our office will take care of that. Things that are on there, there are things that we went through the public hearing process, each department.
Yes.
Sometimes there's an outstanding thing left to do us later, so that's that's why those are on.
Was there anything glaring to you from us or?
My reaction is no.
Okay. I think the biggest concern is our CCD and what we're going to do about those ambulances in the future.
Well, and I mentioned, I mean, that kind of here as far as the you need to consider going forward. But as far as the budget for two thousand twenty three and CCD, you're pretty well set. The one thing I I was looking at this, because it didn't hit me tonight, I was talking to the council about it. You guys put that supply line item in your CCD budget. CCD didn't have supplies. It's cap up. So technically, we should have taken that six thousand out of that and put it into a capital line. It's not a big deal either way.
We kept an equipment line.
You can have.
It should have been.
With supplies. You have a two thousand category line item, and I I should have said something to Justin about it when I saw it. It didn't hit me at the time, and we did do some changing that night when the council approved the CCD budget in the areas that needed to go. And just it hit me at that point till later. So just as a thought going forward, good supplies don't apply to CCD.
Yeah, but it does equip. And so can we make that as an after?
Well, I I we may, if the council decides to change that when they actually adopt the budget, fine.
Okay.
If they don't, it can just be a transfer of line item later. It's not a big deal. I just, it hit me later. It didn't hit me.
Because technically, that could be a red flag for state work counts.
Correct. You got to. What do you guys think?
Yeah, yeah, well.
It's not a bad deal, but like I say, it hit me later that we should have put that to.
All right.
Okay. Yeah, there's obviously, there's a lot of departments that's pretty tedious, a lot of things to for them to address before they get the approval process. Yes.
Great report.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other new business that you're aware of? Right, hearing none, we will go to opportunity for public comments. Again, as we have done in the the last many meetings, if anyone has an issue outside of solar that we'd like to address the board commissioners, we invite you to step forward, present your name, your address, and concerns or comments.
I'm Linda Morgan from Upland. At one point, we had an offer for a Narcan vending machine. Do you recall that? And I I'm an IU Health employee, and in our newsletter, I just saw the other day that the hospital was getting one. There's nineteen of those in the state. And it's being paid for by a federal grant overdose lifeline. And I just wondered if it comes up again, if you guys might want to reconsider something like that here in our county.
At at the time, Mr. Mr. Mowry was uncomfortable with that, being a former sheriff. Well, we haven't, he's already gone, but we haven't talked with the new sheriff to see if that is something that he wants to entertain or not. Reggie, our current sheriff, said that he would would be interested, but others in his staff were were kind of saying we're not sure about that, chief. So we refrain from doing it. But we're we're happy to review that with the new sheriff and see if that's something that he wants to to tackle.
If I find out it's working well somewhere else, then I'll try and get that information too.
If I remember correctly, that request was to place one at the jail.
That's correct.
And after that was denied, I believe she was going to follow up with Judge Spitzer to see if anything else worked.
She as far as other location. May have been Judge Spitzer or Kenworthy, I'm not sure. But but she may have gone and checked.
Just a second. I'm sorry. I've I've heard a little bit about this with some concerns. Because my understanding Narcan can become outdated. Is that correct? I don't know what the the timeframe and doesn't it have to be at a certain temperature kept?
Well, I think it, I mean, it would be in the bidding machines, but they give those out to folks that has a prescription for narcotic. Those they order a Narcan prescription to go with it. And people keep them around the house until they need them. And just between, you think, there's a lot of things that expire, but they're not bad. So having something that's expired by a few weeks is better than nothing.
And so and then the other question that came up is, how do you, how do you take a look at possibly an age type thing where kids aren't just going into it and.
Just taking stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a concern. I think that might be part of why they want to keep it inside.
I mean, those are, those are my two concerns about it. When when you come back and and we review it and things like that. If you could kind of address that for us a little bit, maybe what you found out in other communities and things like that, if you could, if you could address that, that would be great. Okay, good, because that's that's.
That question, I've seen Narcan work right out of your field, the people that not breathing nothing, no, I know. Breathing, and I've I've seen him just come back pretty much alive. So I understand the importance of it. We just want to make sure that we, again, Mr. Mowry was concerned that we were saying we've arrested this, you cleaned out, now here's someone, you go do it again. That was his concern.
Yeah. Yeah, I was here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other non-solar requests.
Drainage? Yes, just so happened to be on my sheet.
Okay. We will go to to the solar, and I know drainage is a part of that. And we'll go, we'll go to about five two, if that's okay. Yeah. So we've got about fifteen minutes.
Eight five sixty south wheeling pipe. Clarification, you mentioned in your defense of draft four that there are some plans that have to be developed by other boards or groups than you guys. I have drainage erosion help highway. Is there any other plans that have to be developed?
I believe the EMA is a part of that as well. There have to be fire concerns, fire access, those types of things for emergency management.
Okay, and for clarification, I believe Steve stated that in the event that one of those boards were not accepting of a solar company's proposal, then that would stop the project.
Puts it on hold, yes.
Puts it on hold.
Puts, okay, help me withhold.
Till they come up with a solution where the drainage board or whoever would accept that, then it just puts it on hold. I mean, they can't, they can't go forward with it.
As I understand it, they can't take it to the APC until all of these criteria are met.
And the APC would have the final say so.
So the APC will not accept any applications until these plans have been approved by these boards?
I'll I'll get clarification from your APC director, but I think they can file a what do you call it, an application, but then they have to meet the criteria of the the boards. And I believe that's what it is. They have to sign up before we can say, okay, do you meet this standard, this standard, this standard?
Okay.
So there are, there are, there are plenty of, per se, watchdog type things for us as residents.
Okay, not, not, I don't intend to offend the commissioners today, but I'm going to ask this question. Several of these departments are kind of regulated and funded by you guys. I I listened to this for a long time. They didn't come in, they proposed. So I would hope that no undue influence in what they decide will occur from this elected legislative branch. That's safe to say. Okay.
I would say it'd be safe to say.
Thank you.
I mean, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Drainage. Now, I for personal background, I have five tracts owned by my family that's going to join solar developments based on those I assume have signed contracts with solar companies. So I have a tremendously strong interest, I think, a legitimate interest into how these solar developments that I my family's farms will join are going to be impacted. Okay, so my understanding of drainage is that when I pay an assessment on an open ditch or a county ditch that's maintained, taxes are collected and so forth, but that's based on watershed. What I pay in taxes is based on watershed. And by by paying that watershed assessment on those taxes, then that enables me to have the right to drainage. Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, you know, as I lay in bed wondering how this is going to impact my family's farm when I'm gone, I think about, okay, so how do I get access to that assessed drain that I'm paying taxes on through this solar development? If provisions aren't made from the beginning.
And and that is correct, Randy, and we note in the 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 drainage board requirements, mutual drains have to be identified, and then if they cannot they cannot work in the actual assessed drains, we're we're asking in the in the in the economic development, current is seventy five feet from top of bank for our easement, but in the economic development, we will be pushing for a hundred feet from top of bank so that there's more room there. When we identify where where mutual drains are, then they have to qualify and make provisions for access to that, to to build. They can't, you can't put puts items down in the ground and break up mutual drains.
I I get existing, Mark. That's what, that's not my concern about existing. I know that we have had discussions about how we're going to protect existing. What about the future? Because if I'm paying, we all know that drains are based on watershed.
Right.
And if my taxes are being based on watershed, what happens in the event that my children want to increase the tile or the drainage on this farm, and they need access to that drain that we pay taxes on through the years? And there's a solar development in front of it.
Saying what you're saying.
So we not only have to consider existing drainage, we have to look into the future and make sure that we've got easement and access to future drainage. Because I don't think the solar company is going to allow me just, they're not going to agree to take that solar panel down so I can now put a drain to improve my property to that ditch that I pay taxes on. We've got to look into the future here. Because we're talking about thirty to sixty years that this could impact. Okay, I just want that on the table because I'm going to be very adamant about assuring that my family's future is taken care of. Thank you.
Ethanol. Just want, just want to point out, we we set a timeframe, and I didn't say two minutes apiece, but we're we're down to about eight, nine minutes left, if anybody else wants to talk.
One. Steve, you mentioned ethanol. You mentioned that your projection is the future that corn will not be needed due to the fact that we're going to be all driving electric cars. Is that an opinion or is that research based?
That's opinion. It's absolutely opinion, and and the reason I have that, the reason I have that is what I've been reading like everybody has. I mean, we're going away from combustible. Now, will there still be a lot of combustible engines out there? Absolutely. But I I I see that going down. I guess you're you're talking about future, right? You just talked about future. That's my future. I'm seeing it. I'm seeing that there's going to be less demand for corn. Now, there's other derivatives of that, okay? But when when forty seven percent of Indiana corn is towards ethanol, and and you know, I I I went to a lot of meetings and I've got a lot of emails saying we're all going to die because we don't have enough to eat. Okay, right now, we put forty seven percent of our corn in ethanol. If it gets right down to it, I think I'd rather eat it than have it.
But it's not just for ethanol. You have D D Gs that are used for livestock feeding. That is part of the food chain that appear not. Corn is a hundred percent usable. Get your ethanol and you get your feeding products.
Got it.
I don't think it's a tunnel vision to say we can all, that's all we can plant is corn. There's a lot more variables that are farm used for crops, and and more more is being developed every day.
Point board. That is a correct point board from a officer of the. We'll go on to Frankel.
Yeah, Byron Frankel. First of all, Mike, I want to thank you for your service.
Yes.
And to be a good commissioner over these years.
And your vote.
And your vote to think about a moratorium, to do it fair and include everybody and do it right.
Yeah.
Steve, that moratorium issue pertaining to the windmills does not fly with me. We can have a moratorium and do it right. We can set an ending date. And Mark Bardsley, all the damage you have done to the Grant County farmers over the years. And this, I'm talking about throwing our soil and water conservation now, having the inmates come and tear our office apart and throw it in the basement. And you think you're going to get by with this, you and Steve Wright, you're wrong. The first thing you need to do at the end of this day is to resign as a Grant County Commissioner. That's all I've got to say, unless you've got some questions.
I have nothing to say right now, Byron. Thank you. You've got about five minutes left.
I'm Andy Ellis, and I'm from Fairmount. And disappointed. And I absolutely second what Byron said about Mike. Very much appreciate the support. I appreciate the fact that you listened to what the community was saying. I'm not going to get into name calling or anything. However, I don't believe you understand your constituents. I was at the meetings where draft seven was introduced, and we did discuss it. Neither one of you were there. I was there, and we did discuss it, and we voted on it. And you know what? It was the ordinance of the people.
Clarification, Andy. Are you an APC member?
No, but I was there.
So you didn't vote on it. You may have had public discussion, but you didn't vote on it.
But but that's my point. The APC is listening to people like me, and you're not. They they listen to the people that was there to try to give their input. That is how the government is supposed to work. You're not, two people are not supposed to live on an island.
Yes.
And when you get right down to it, Steve, you've just been trying to sell this since you came into office. The other night, when you put on the show, I went to your show.
I appreciate that.
I was there.
I appreciate it.
Because I knew that that if I didn't go, I couldn't say that I didn't try.
Right.
I listened to what you had to say. I've been to your meetings. I've sat with you, and the entire time you've been trying to sell this. You did nothing to support the concerns of the people. Everything that was stated the other night was a joke. I mean, if there's a fire that breaks out, that was one of the concerns. Well, that's why we got a fire department. That was the answer. That's why you got a fire department. Well, they said they would train us to put it out.
And the training came into play.
But not not the fact that concerned that there's a potential fire hazard. That was not addressed. And then when people talked about migratory birds, you had an expert about sand creams. You don't have any other issues, right? All I'm trying to say is draft seven was the people's ordinance. It had people like me and the people you see behind us supporting it, and you ignored us.
Right.
You absolutely ignored us. You didn't change anything in draft four, like you said, and you too, Mark. You said, hey, we can go back and revise this. There is nothing that indicates you're going to try to revise anything.
The fact is, we can.
But you're not going to.
Don't tell me what I'm not doing because I've already got recommendations.
But you're demonstrating your lack of willingness to support the people that put you into office. So if you want to have dialogue, that's fine.
Okay, so so as I've mentioned several times. Okay, so, so, as I've mentioned several times in here, we've got sixty-six thousand people that I represent. Wait, wait, whoa, whoa. Point of order, order, Mr.?
Mr.?
Point of order. Okay, because this, this is what we have to do. Sometimes we're going to agree to disagree, and sometimes we're going to disagree and, and disagree with everything. I've done my homework at what I think is best for Grant County, for Grant County, not just farmers, but for Grant County, okay? I know we don't have investments coming into our community like this, nowhere. Tell me where another two hundred million dollar.
Tell me how much you're going to make.
Okay, I'm done.
I, I think we are done.
Point of order.
Thank you for your time, we will declare that the commissioners is in recess until October third, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, recess.
It resign, Mark, for the day two.